These items include nonroutine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of board staff or public manager person item be heard out of order. I don't think we need to do that today, do we? So, item 1.1, county administrative office, receive a presentation and discuss the Trinity County strategic plan. No fiscal impact. Go ahead, Jim.
Okay, all right, welcome, everybody. First, let me say how nice it is to see you all again and to see that you are safe and well after the devastation of last year. As if the pandemic wasn't enough to deal with. It is great to see you guys back in full operation. I thought since we are picking up this process just literally about a year later, that it was wise to touch base again on the original goals of what we set out to do and the components of the plan that we are building. Be a good, good touch base. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here and just walk through a couple of slides again to to touch point of where we left off the process and what it was we intended to do. So when complete, the plan will have a number of different components that I think will give both the county a long-term view and a destination to continually work toward, but also a sense of short-term actions and priorities that will help you achieve those long-term goals. But what we set out to do was to develop a plan with about a three-year time horizon. And if you remember, we started with sort of, you know, combing the environment for the trends and issues that were really shaping the future, what the implications of all of those were and where the county had some real opportunities to provide even greater value to those you serve, to build consensus around a compelling vision for the county. As you as board of supervisors and future board of supervisors have a shared destination that you're continually trying to work toward. And then obviously to build a plan that addresses the issues that are required to realize that vision, set some very tangible milestones and priorities for progress. And I think equally important, not just to have a well-thought-through and relevant plan, but to understand how you're going to execute that plan and what is your process for monitoring it, evaluating it, and keeping it fresh and relevant on an annual basis. So that was the, the goals we set out to achieve in this process. And this is a slide that really reflects the components of the plan that we are looking to create. And it has, in my mind, it has three major components with some very distinct purposes. What we'll call the strategic framework is the long-term view. These are fundamental statements and agreements that reflect the focus of your work, the purpose of the county, direction, the culture of the county, and a really fairly timeless statements that really are the foundation for what you seek to accomplish and the filter through which you view your success. The second portion of what we're trying to develop is really of what you would call the strategic plan for a particular planning cycle, in this case, three years. And we'll call this sort of the midterm view. It defines the relevant issues and the specific outcomes that you are going to try to reach in the planning cycle in order to keep, keep progress towards your long-term vision. And that's going to change, obviously, every two to three years. That's going to be a fresh reflection of what are the, what are the emerging issues? Where do we need some action? Where do we need some outcomes in order to continue to advance the mission and the vision of the county? And then the third component is really the short-term view. It is what's going to drive action on an annual basis? What's going to drive alignment of resources? What's going to drive the staff's work, the issues the board of supervisors focuses on? Where are the priorities? Actionable priorities each year, in this case, the first year of the plan. So that, so you've got a short-term view within a midterm context, within even a long-term context. So it's a really flexible way to kind of take action in the short term that you know is going to lead you to, towards your long-term goals. So that is the, the pieces of the plan, as you recall, that we're, that we're actually developing. All right, so let me put this down. And let's take a look at where we are. Here we go. So this is the latest draft of the plan that we're working with. And again, I'll just do a quick catch-up for folks in the room and obviously on the board who, where we haven't kind of touched this in a while. So we've got our strategic framework. We've got the long-term view. We had a great session just about a year ago where we got some final feedback from you all and from, from the community on these long-term statements. We've got your mission statement. We've got your vision statement, which is Trinity County is a safe, vibrant, small-town community where individuals, families, and businesses can thrive and is recognized as a premier destination for those seeking outdoor adventure and the restorative qualities of the natural environment. So kind of the shared compelling future vision that you're constantly working to achieve. And then we have what you might call key result areas, areas where the county needs to perform if the vision and the mission are going to be achieved. And so we've got obviously long-term goals related to county services, very important function, obviously, of a public entity. Communication outreach and engagement, two long-term goals related to that performance area. Growth and development, again, another two long-term goals that we agreed to. Natural resources and the environment, a long-term goal, and finally, county governance and operations. You can't do much unless you're strong and viable and healthy and financially secure as a county. So these are equally important goals to have in your strategic plan, and we have two, two such long-term goals there. These are very broad directional goals. They sort of take the vision and break down where you need to focus some effort and activity if you're going to realize a vision like, like that what you have. Now, there's a third piece to the strategic framework, which due to the timeframe and the, and the, the process we were under, we did not address thus far. And that third piece is what you might call your operating values. So if, if the mission is who we are and the vision is where we're going, then the operating values are really what we believe in or what we stand for as, as a county. What, what's the culture of, of the county and the way that we work together, in the way that we make decisions, in the way that we operate, run the business of the county? And so we have not talked about these yet. And so what I've pulled here for you today is just some samples, literally samples of when you think of a, of a public entity like, like the County of Trinity, what might be some very important principles or beliefs that would guide action and behavior? And these are by no means comprehensive, but again, some, some examples of what you might, what you might come up with. So what I would suggest on this is that this be a future board of supervisors and staff executive team discussion where you look at these principles and, and agree that these are foundational beliefs that we can use to, to operate the business of the county. And again, they should be more than words on a piece of paper. These should be actionable when you review your progress every year and you review how you're working. Well, as a board of supervisors and a staff, these are values that I would pull out and really look at. You know, are we consistently demonstrating these principles? If so, how so? If not, how not? And, and look for where you can improve in, in simply the way that you come together and work as a partnership. So they are an important part of the, of the strategic framework, and I would suggest that this is something you might want to follow up on and, and flesh out and agree to as a piece of, of what you're going to approve as your plan. Okay, let me, let me just pause there before we get into the substance of the work of today. Is there any questions, comments from the board of supervisors on, on this, on the framework piece? This is obviously a discussion that we've had that you've gotten comment on. These are fairly final statements. Any comments or questions on this piece of the, of the, of the product here?
Any questions? I don't see any questions from the board, so I think you're good to go ahead.
All right, good. Well, that should catch us up. I think where we are today and the focus of today's conversation is to look then at the second component, which is the actual plan for the planning cycle. And again, it's broken down by these key result areas. And as a strategic plan does, it looks at the next two, three years and says, okay, what are the important issues that we must address and, and have some real progress on if we're going to move toward this broader vision we have for the county? And so what the work that we've done so far is to look at milestones for each of these issues. And again, the milestones communicate where, what progress you want to make by the end of the planning cycle, which is 2025. So these milestones for each of these issues reflect sort of the outcome that you hope to achieve by the end of the planning cycle. Call them sort of milestone markers, if you will, because that's really what they are. And then today, obviously, we want to, we want to affirm those. We did get comment on this, and so this was a draft that we have affirmed, but if there's any questions about these milestones, we certainly want to talk about it. And then the guts of our discussion today is to look at the first year of the plan and think about, you know, what are some of the concrete deliverables or concrete actions that we want to take within the next 12 months around, around these issues? And so we can have a, a great conversation here today and also then as part of this get comment from, from the community on these deliverables as well. That would be terrific. And then I'll clean everything up into another draft that we can look at next time. So let's, let's dive in. Let's, let's get ready to look at this. Let's just take this section by section. And I will capture the notes on the screen as we talk about these deliverables. But the first section of the, of your plan is county services. And you'll note that there are four strategic issues in this section. No surprise, a very important section of work that you do. And two of them, these little asterisks here on two of them were just a very preliminary sense of, of some level of priority on some of these issues where you might want to, either, either through urgency or opportunity, there was a need perhaps to make more progress on some of these issues versus others. But we've got public health, behavioral health, and social services. We have communication, including utility infrastructure, public safety and code enforcement. And the final issue in this section was methods of service delivery. So let's take each of these and let's, number one, affirm the milestone that it, that it's, that it's accurate. It's, it's where we want to be by the end of the planning cycle. And let's do some brainstorming about, about some concrete deliverables for the first year of the plan. So milestone, public health, behavioral health, and social services. By 2025, services to address mental health and drug use issues are more widely promoted and accessible to those in need. That was an important issue, obviously, and progress you wanted to make within this planning cycle. So let's take a look at that issue and let's talk about what is it that you either are doing or could do in a concrete manner within the next 12 months to make progress along this milestone? And I, and I will say, look, this is a big plan. There are a lot of issues. And so we do need to be thinking about a sense of priority, a sense of how you want to use your resources. It is entirely feasible that although each of these issues is important, when we're looking at the first year of the plan, the next 12 months, you may say, this is an important issue. But in the next 12 months, we don't have a particular deliverable. This is an issue we might take up in year two or year three. So I think it's entirely okay to say that there are no deliverables for the first year of the plan here because you've got a number of issues here that we have to work through. And you'll have a chance to look at all of this again in the next session too. So, all right, so I've said enough. Let's dive in. Public health, behavioral health, social services, you see where we want to be at the end of the planning cycle. What current activity can we count as a, as a major deliverable? Or what other ideas do you have on how we can make progress related to this issue?
Does anybody have any comments to begin with on that? Go ahead.
So I guess I feel like it'd be challenging to fully address that without the involvement of the, some of the staff members or the relevant department head. But outside of that, I would imagine a good starting point in my, my view would be an assessment or a survey of some sort for the relative department head to ask them, you know, what, where do you think we are in the, in the range of our neighboring counties or jurisdictions or our national states? What is the range of services that can be provided and where do we fall in that range? And that gives us an actual way of tracking, you know, starting point, benchmarks that are tangible. And, and then also what the, the tangible goal would be to, to state, you know, we have achieved this goal we set out to do three years ago. Three years ago, we started with the survey. We out, we identified these points and these physical, I don't know what, what to call them, physical needs maybe, whether it's housing or homeless shelter or partnering with neighboring counties, mental health services that are more well-funded or have better options than ours. So being able to identify that and then track it for three years before we start throwing money at it, I would like to see that.
And what's worked, what hasn't worked for other kind of, I love the idea of kind of looking, I mean, everybody's dealing with this, right? This isn't just Trinity County. So let's find out what counties are doing. Let's find out what the trends are and, and do something meaningful for us as a benchmark. Excellent. Other thoughts on this? I think it's a great place to start. What other, any other thoughts?
Yeah, just kind of adding on to Jeremy there. Have you worked with any counties that are budget strapped like they all are, like us? And have they come up with any creative solutions to fix this problem? Since I'm sure there's problems in all the counties.
Oh, boy. Is it ever? I think the, the thing that I've seen, and again, I'm, I'm by no means an expert here. I think, I think probably Liz on your staff is the, is the department head that you're, that you're speaking of. And she's going to know much, much deeper what's going on. But I, and an issue like this, what I think, you know, any public entity realizes is that they're not going to go it alone. This is going to be several well-placed partnerships that have complementary assets and resources that can be brought to the table to address sort of an endemic problem like this. And so I think what you're going to find is that there are some very important partnerships. And you may have some of these in place already. I think Liz would know much better. But I think the approach is going to be to identify some, some well-placed partners that can provide complementary services or assets that you can work with to address this issue. I mean, that's, that's what I've seen in this area for sure.
Thank you, Jim.
Absolutely.
You may want to capture that then in a bullet, Jim.
Okay, let's see. So we'll say investigate. And again, I, 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 I like what Jeremy said, start with the assessment, but let's investigate possible partnerships. But absolutely start with the assessment that would bring complementary assets. Okay.
And CSAC and NACO, you know, they've got subcommittees on, on essentially all of these topics and, and sectors we're talking about during this.
Absolutely. Great resource for you. Yeah, and this, and, and go beyond California too. I mean, again, this is a problem that did be dealt with nationally for sure. All right, excellent. I'll keep moving on. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I, I, as somebody that was involved in schools for a long time, I think we need to not just talk about staff and department heads, but we need, the counties need to work at a much younger age. I, what we seem to do in this country is that we have somebody that's scarred or wounded at eight years old, and then we wait for them to be 30, and then we try to put a Band-Aid on it. And so I, I know it's not totally, it's not the county's role to work here, but the reality is, is this is the root cause. If, if we fix problems at a young age, we don't deal with problems at a, in an older age. And I totally agree with what supervisors Brown is talking about, but I think we really need to look at those root causes of
Yes.
family issues.
Poverty.
Poverty, drug use, I mean, the whole, the whole lower, otherwise we just are caught in the same cycle forever.
It is so fortuitous that you bring this up. Literally, literally this week, I was in Denver working with a subgroup of the American Academy of Pediatrics. And one of their subgroup is the Council on Early Childhood, and they've done extensive research on what they call social determinants of health. And it is all about working from infant to age eight in looking at what are the long-term implications of, of those formative years and what are the determinants of future health? And, and issues such as mental health issues, drug use issues, et cetera. And so I absolutely are connecting with what you're saying. And I would say in addition to CSAC, I love, I love the idea of saying there are other organizations out there that are looking at this issue and looking at preventatively. And they ought to be resources for you as well.
I have one thing to add to the list. And I don't know where, where you.
I have one thing to add, um, to the list in, I don't know where, where you put it in, but, um, utilizing the lawsuit money from the OxyContin issue. I know Trinity County, I think has been, it's a recipient. I don't know if we've seen those funds come in or not yet, but I think it would be beneficial to keep the public aware of, you know, how this national issue has impacted our local community. And also where those national lawsuit funds are going to go back into our local community to hopefully avoid and prevent, um, further abuse of substance.
Uh, in to jump on top of that, I also, when, when I was interviewed by the Equity Funds for Cannabis, I have, you know, pushed hard that some of those funds should go down at the young ages. For example, if, if somebody drops out of high school at 14, because he's going to go make his fortune in cannabis and that no longer works, uh, for him. He's lost. So we somehow need to try to help those people. And I think that's a very relevant use of that money.
The Love and Logic course is, has, is offered throughout the school system. Um, and that has been, I think it's one of the, the, um, un- underutilized programs that the county offers to all parents. Um, sometimes it can be, you know, mandated to attend it through court order, things like that. But it is a free service that is provided. And essentially it is, um, based off of those first seven years or eight years are the most influential and kind of determine a lot of the
Absolutely.
outcome.
Absolutely.
I think in a short-term deliverable that supervisors in the county can support are, I forget her acronym, but our school police person.
Intervention.
Yes. Um, and make sure that they are not pulled away from other duties and, and work uh, in the, in the school. And because my understanding is I don't have firsthand, but my understanding is a lot of time that person gets pulled away. And, and do, doing other duties. So that's a short-term thing that we can try to figure out how to support, support that. Or at least look into if there is an issue there that needs to be helped.
Okay, excellent.
It might be nice to find a way to incentivize the Love and Logic program.
What is, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the, what was the name of the program?
Well, we have this Love and Logic program that Supervisor Brown was describing and it's there. It's an option for people and sometimes people are directed that they need to participate in that. But it might be nice to incentivize it. I know I took that when I was a, a brand new parent and, um, it was really impactful to me. Um, and sometimes when those things are out there, we don't realize the opportunity that really is there waiting. It's free. It's available. You can participate. So to find a way to maybe encourage people more so to go ahead and jump in on that as an idea.
Excellent. Excellent. And if, if you get into this and, um, you know, as, as, you know, Liz is looking for resources or whatever. If you, if you want the name of the person at the academy that's working on this, uh, let me know and I'll certainly pass that along. Um, okay. Excellent. Let's go down to communication and utility infrastructure. This was noted as a, uh, as a priority issue. I know, and I know you were working on some very tangible things at the time. Again, a year ago, uh, we had two milestones for this by 2025 and afford, uh, an affordable option or options for connectivity is in place for all citizens. And two reliable, affordable power that meets demand is available for all citizens. So those were general, but obviously, you know, progress trackable type, uh, milestone. So uh, give me an update here. Where, is this still relevant? Are you, are there particular deliverables for the next 12 months that would be important to put here?
Well, that's going to be where our broadband falls.
Hmm. Right. Um, well, yeah, Trinity County became part of the California Connect Authority through RCRC this last year. And essentially that is a collective of rural counties that are pooling funding together. And then counties or entities within the counties can pull from that funding for a variety of uh, re- or uses such as planning, implementation, feasibility studies on broadband, um, development, um, construction, all that stuff. And so I think we're kind of at the point of needing to, um, look at where, where our options are based on kind of what the California Connect Authority program offers. And then also tie into our local providers and see if or where the overlap is. Um, as far as resources that will benefit them or resources that will benefit the county as a whole and, um, work on identifying that as a common ground area. Yeah. Uh, power.
Electricity?
Yeah.
That's just, uh, I had, I had asked, I'm a little lost on where we are. I, I had thought Jill had taken the lead on the, um, conductivity, but she's, uh, when I asked her that question, she told me that Jeremy is the lead on conductivity.
And there's no formal lead. I'd say it's just based on the
So.
California Connect being the RCRC delegate.
So in a short-term thing is that we need to, with Richard leaving, Richard was our lead source on Digital 299.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure where we are on that. I know that, uh, Mr. Finch is working with T-Pod, I think. I don't really know very many details about using the dark fiber uh, that goes to the dam. So that, that we have two tangible, uh, things going on that we're really not involved in. And, and at least getting reports or seeing if there's something we can do to help, I think is something that, that, um, uh, would be a tangible deliverable.
Um, good.
Oh, I was just going to say, I have reached out to Travis in order to connect with him and get up to speed on exactly where things lie with PUD and those, they've got those two fibers off of the WAPA line. And so where that's moved from. So I'll, I'll get up to speed on, on that base.
Okay, you know, Supervisor, Ex-Supervisor Morris had kind of, um, been in charge of the Digital 299 for a long time. Humboldt State's involved. There's a lot of moving parts and we've had some, but I think two presentations over the last three years from Humboldt State. And so I think it would be great to, um, start with an initial public meeting with TPUD Velocity and, um, the RCRC Representative Barbara Hayes, who's been in charge of the Connect California. And then we kind of have our main entities and avenues and resources that we're aware of. Um, maybe extending that invite to the Digital 299, the group or whatever entity from Humboldt State. And then we can, because it's, it's been challenging for me to really identify. And I've talked with Travis at Velocity and I've sent him a spreadsheet of all of the programs that CA Connect Authority offers, asking, you know, are any of these relevant to you? What, you know, where are we at with trying to work together towards making sure we're not missing out on these opportunities? Cause it was described at the last RCRC meeting as, you know, the broadband infrastructure money is, is serious one-time funding, um, nationally. And so we don't want to miss out on that, or at least in my opinion, we don't want to miss out on it. Um, you know, an emphasis being, a lot of people still say that they don't have the ability to do an online college course sometimes. Um, either because yeah, maybe the power goes out or the available internet isn't adequate enough or there's not enough redundancy. Um, I hear a lot of those things. So identifying the issues, uh, as a group would be great.
I, I would definitely hope that we would invite Digital 299. I'm sure they're, you know, a pretty monstrous company with a lot of money backing them up now. Um, and so at least having them explain to us where they're, they're coming from. Uh, because my understanding is there is construction that has been done on, on that process and that they have finished their environmentals. And I, I've been told that Google's the, the big driving force behind them now. So.
Okay.
Uh, I guess, you know, maybe the chairman or the board as a whole wants to decide, is this something that would be, you know, should we form a broadband ad hoc so we can really stay on top of this? Or do we want to just try to have an initial meeting and see where that goes with the, the main stakeholders? And then make a determination from there. I don't know.
Yeah. Part of it is I don't know what we do as a board to help this process. But at least if we have somebody involved in it, then we know maybe there's nothing we can do anyway, uh, but at least being up to speed is that we might be able to. Uh, the other question I have is, is that we have now, uh, satellite services. Is there anything that we can do to help people that will never be served by broadband to get onto? Elon's, uh, new system, which seems to be faster.
Starlink.
Uh, Starlink and
I have Starlink.
And but for, is there something that is, are there programs that we can get to underserved people? To get them help getting those things in for schools or whatever. So that would be another aspect. I haven't started Starlink. I used, I'm still on the old HughesNet. So.
Yeah. I think it's like a two-year wait now.
Hey Keith, can I ju- can I jump in real quick?
You got it, Mr. Coons.
Yes, sorry. Um, with the, with the new, uh, DOT Director coming in, that's a person that probably will have the most contact with the Digital 299, because a lot of the county's responsibility is working with our, uh, uh, right-of-ways and bridges that they need to hang some of the, the equipment on, which I know Rick had started and it, it worked with them. So that'll probably be the person that'll have the most connection if they, you know, start bringing the lines in because there'll be areas of the county that they'll need right-of-ways and, and, uh, we're getting the word, um, easements and then, uh, permission to, to use some of our, our, our bridges. So, um, at this point, yeah, nothing more has happened, but, uh, we're, that's the person that'll probably be most involved.
But was the lady's name Connie? Is that was?
Yeah. Yeah. From Humboldt, Humboldt State. Yeah.
But I think she works for RCRC now. I'm not positive, but she may have jumped ships.
Yeah, I think Jeremy's right. I think she was with Humboldt State and then now she's RCRC or the way around. I can't remember.
Yeah. Um, and then it was that with the new DOT Director, if there's a new DOT Director?
Well, that's up to the board.
Tuesday.
Yeah, that's up to the board on Tuesday.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. All right. Let's keep, uh, let's keep plowing forward here. On public safety and code enforcement, obviously another, uh,
I, I do have one thing to add to the, it's not broadband, but in the second bullet point there, the reliable, affordable power.
Um, right.
We have started work on that with Supervisor Brown and Supervisor Cox and the CCA that we're working on. So that's something that, um, we are working on now. And I would like to see a deliverable in the next 12 months.
I can give a thorough report out at the next board meeting on kind of where we lie and what we need to look at.
Okay. Yeah. And you said CCA? Is that what you said?
Yeah, Community Choice Aggregate.
Got it. Excellent.
So in the interim, without a director, should we get together with the, um, proper authorities? Would this, see what they have to say? And then when we go into negotiations or talks with the, uh, the other folks, we at least have the direction that's been given to us by PUD or uh, all the entities that will be involved, you know, with this. Cause we may not have
With the CCA, you mean?
Yeah.
Um, Jeremy's pretty well on top of all of that with the, with the organization of that.
Yeah.
Do you want me to answer it now or do we wait till Tuesday and I'll report out on it?
You can. Yeah, that's right.
I'll report on it.
It may be a while.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Let's jump down to
And I'm sorry to go back on you one more time, but I think that, um, our power in this county is very much reliant on, on water in the lake and and, um, and affordable power also is, is that. So I do think that we need to have some sort of deliverable on, or at least a statement within our vision that, that we need to keep as much water available for power as, and, and I don't want to make it a priority over fish or whatever, but that it is a priority to keep water in the river or in the lakes to keep our power sources available or have mediation. If, if the water goes away, have some sort of mediation for that.
And there's a lot of drought funding out there. Um, so I imagine there's funding out there to have a third party do some kind of analysis on what are options maybe? And there could be drought funding assistance where if the water was too low to be able to provide what we're trying to provide and fulfill commitments, then maybe additional funding could step in and assist with some of that. I'm not sure, but I know there's a lot of drought funding out there. Um,
And, and obviously this is a, a T-Pod lead on this, but, uh, we need to be able to assist in any way that we can and might be a point.
So Keith, as you know, we'll probably fall under, um, underwatered in the, in the lake this year. We'll have to use auxiliary outlet.
Right.
Which will cause PUD to not be able to generate nearly the amount of power to, to Lewiston, Spring Creek, Carr, um, which are big power makers for us. And I think it's almost a foregone conclusion, I guess, towards the end of the summer. That will be there. So how will that affect? So I'm sure WAPA will supply it, but at a
Right. So
Much higher price.
The system without going down this rabbit hole much farther is the system's based on a 20-year running average. And so, uh, so our power allotment is off that 20-year average. So it lowers the amount that is available to us in the 20 years by having these bad years. But still the WAPA, if, if there was no power, WAPA still has to give us our percentage of the, of, of that back.
But not our percentage that we would not become the lowest, uh, electricity in the state.
Uh, no, there, it's, it's still a 20-year average on the cost of power to produce.
Yeah.
So, but yeah, that's a that don't want to go down any further in that hole.
Good. All right.
All right. Now we can go.
Now we can go. All right. Public safety and code enforcement by 2025, accessibility and sustainability of essential emergency services. Ambulance, fire, police has increased. Code enforcement has increased, is more proactive and has successfully targeted and sust- substantially eliminated or transitioned illegal cannabis operations. So again, major, major set of milestones and obviously an important issue for you all, which I know you're working on. So again, reflection of current activity, ideas for the next 12 months that you should strive to, uh, have actionable thoughts.
How to fix cannabis program in five easy words?
Okay, six.
Well, and there's a little bit more to the code enforcement really than just cannabis because the Fire Safe Council was just discussing yesterday that we're going to need some code enforcement in order to assure that our residents are complying with our, there's an ordinance in our municipal code that says we need to maintain our own defensible space around our dwellings. And that is the responsibility of each property owner. And so people are feeling like that's going to need a little bit of attention as well.
Um, so, you know, public safety fires are, are probably, in my opinion, right up there on the top of the list. Um, one of the things I'd like to look at is trying to acquire all of the money that it would take to complete our CWPPs, our Community Wildfire Protection Plans. Um, I think, uh, either RCD or Watershed Center was going to try to put together that total cost because we have them all identified. Um, and they get updated, what, every two years, I believe, or every three years? And so we could kind of take a snapshot and say, hey, look, it's actually going to cost us $20 million to complete all these CWPPs. And if they're all completed in this two or three-year period, XYZ is going to be the, the benefit, the public benefit and the safety benefit. Um, and to look for the, that money either as one-time funds or from something that we're overlooking. There's so much money out there sometimes. I think that would be beneficial. Um, it's, it's one of the best plans that we actually already have outside of a general plan or outside of, uh, Fire Safe Council's plan. Um, it's pretty broad and it covers the whole county and all of, it focuses on where the people are living.
Well, and it does more than that too, because it enables us to get further funding because we have that. Well, and it does more than that too, because it enables us to get further funding because we have that place. So it's really important.
Right. Absolutely.
Back to Jill's using code enforcement for more than cannabis. So a deliverable there is going to have to be, how do we pay for that? So the cannabis, in, in the past. Cannabis has paid for. Virtually all of our code enforcement, because virtually all of our code enforcement had to deal with cannabis. But of course, as, as we do wider spectrum of things, we're going to have to come up with a system to track how. Their times are used and that's obviously going to have to come out of a general fund account to, to pay for non cannabis code enforcement.
Well, and in paying for things, we have to staff the jail by law before we can move on to these other things that we want to see happen for our safety. So this. Funding issue is bigger than just code enforcement.
I, I'm just trying to make the point that. We have a robust code enforcement, but we, if we're going to spry and widen that, we're going to have to not just say cannabis is paying for.
Any other thoughts on this?
There's got to be a little bit more.
The big rocks here.
Well, within this milestone. Is that it's pretty tough to transition illegal cannabis operators into a system that was not functioning at this point. So by the actions that have, that have gone on and I don't need to go way deep in it. We've basically created more illegal cannabis operations today than we had six months ago. So the deliverable is to. Work. With high amounts of effort to transition. The. Now Dan, how we put it, the actively seeking license holders to. Through the appendixes and to get them permanent licenses.
Annual licenses.
Ending renewals.
Yeah.
Well, let's see, it's, what, what's the state cause call, call the, your final license? Just an annual. Okay. So instead of permanent, it would be annual license. So that, that alone could lower the amount of illegal cannabis growers by 500 pretty, pretty quick.
You could add in there something about the cannabis equity program is under development and interviews have been being conducted. And that, that program should. There's a chance that that program, depending on what the findings are, will be able to address some of, some of these more or less with funding. But that would be state money coming back into the county to address. And, you know, essentially something has brought as negative impacts from cannabis since the seventies.
It's called the cannabis equity program?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to see something in there about the South Fork watershed. As a public safety measure, it is identified on CDFW's webpage as one of the critically threatened watersheds in the state from cannabis. And the county needs help with this process. Whether it's via a declaration of emergency from the effects of illegal cannabis in a concentrated area. Or declaration of emergency for. Massive sediment disruption and runoff into the South Fork of the Trinity. And the endangered species that, that contributes to the detriment of their habitat. I think that should be strongly considered. And that kind of coincides with the assistance for more state involvement. Whether it's CDFW or the Department of Cannabis Control or, or Jim Woods or McGuire. I think that that can't really go unnoticed any longer.
And then in this section two, Jim, I think that we have to, I'm just going to go for glorious vision here and say, if we're looking at a. Even a one, two, five year range of time, I want to see all of our outline areas. Be able to hit 911 and have some emergency response quickly. So. That's just going to be more money, more support to our sheriff's department so that he can recruit and retain officers and. Staff down river, South County.
A little backdrop.
Is that an issue?
I've, I've heard it is an issue, but you would know.
911 response? I mean, it's kind of. Yes, it is an issue. Also, when I moved to Trinity County, people in Denny took pride in that. You know, 911 wasn't going to get you anywhere. And that was one of the appeals of living in Denny. I'd say that has changed a little bit in the last 10 or 15 years. And now someone is a little bit more concerned about. What if they do have a heart attack and how long it's going to take to have help? And that's just not, I use Denny as an extreme example. I know Trinity Village residents would love to see an increased presence of at least, you know. Oh, at least once a week, the sheriff just drives through the neighborhood. The, the 911 response is challenging. We do have an MOU with Humboldt County. It was used just last week with the incident in the Trinity. Trinity Village area and, you know, there was someone with a chainsaw with, using it as a threatening weapon. And so there wasn't, yeah, you know, they were on the phone with the Weaverville Dispatch. And they said, oh, well, you know, essentially we're going to send Humboldt right now because we can actually hear the chainsaw on the phone in the background. And so Humboldt came over, Humboldt stayed there until I think Trinity arrived. So there was an overlap. There was good communication even to from Humboldt, you know, which is Willow Creek. There's a substation in Willow Creek. I think all the sheriffs, you know, maybe shouldn't say it publicly, but I think all the sheriffs leave at 11 o'clock at night from the area. So there's no 24 hour patrol in Willow Creek, which is Humboldt. And so, you know, there's lots of petty theft in downtown Willow Creek. Every night from, you know, 2 AM until 6 AM. But yeah, it has been advocated that they would like better response time. It's essentially impossible unless you have a substation in all these areas. That's, you know, you can't just park down there and wait for something to happen. Weaverville gets the most calls. I don't know if anyone else saw the DSA's dispatch. Information and all their statistics, but it was, you know, you can see where it's all coming from and where the responses are going. Which made me, you know, consider, should there be a, you know, a safety district imposed to the Weaverville area that coincides with the. Community Service District or the Water District in Weaverville. And you add a safety element to it because of a certain percentage of. The responses are all coming from a certain area. Why should the people in the most remote areas pay towards. This public safety element that they don't necessarily feel they get a, a response to. They don't, they don't feel like they're getting their money's worth in their. Their land tax or other taxes that go towards the emergency services. Maybe Weaverville should go to city police.
So it, it, it sounds like we need to, again, a, a, an overall strategy here with that takes into account a lot of what you just said. And what are the factors here?
With the South Fork watershed, sorry to jump in, can you use but illegal in front of the word cannabis there? Or the evolving, I mean, other supervisors can comment on it obviously, but.
Legal is fine with me.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with the illegal cannabis causing the issue.
Thank you. Okay. And again, I'll clean all this up and you'll be able to see this. Absolutely. Again, because we'll, we'll, we'll clearly need to do some prioritizing here. We're, we're on issue three and we have quite a bit, quite, quite a number of deliverables, as you can imagine. So we'll have to. We'll have to do some overview here as well. Anything else on this particular? Issue?
And there's nothing in there really. I guess staffing the jail is in there with funding. Subtopic of the jail would be jail programs. We do have a classroom now in the jail. And we do work with the Shasta College Step Up. Is it the Step Up Program? I'm not sure which one it is. So we have programs, we have third party contractors to help with job force. I think there is further opportunity to look into. Some of the programs we can offer. There are free entities that do inmate assessment. For counties such as ours that can provide, you know, educated data on who would qualify for certain types of programs. Within the new jail. So that can be a good starting point.
Yeah, great. And again, working more preventatively and upstream. That's, that's terrific. All right, let's. The final issue in this section of the plan is service delivery. And again, this is a little bit all encompassing and maybe you'll, you feel after you read this again, that we've addressed this in various other areas and may or may not need this issue, but. By 2025, key processes such as planning have been streamlined and an improved customer service infrastructure is in place for prompt. Efficient response. So again, system, more of a systems focused. Deliverable here. Yeah, this is, this is a, this, this really relies on so many other pieces, including adequate staffing, including, you know, technology and. Including other, other, a clear sense of priority is a piece of this. So this is a. A bit of a generic issue. You may, you may look at the, the other sections of the plan, especially under county governance and operations. And feel that perhaps we may or may not need this issue, but for now, let's keep it as a placeholder and let me gather your thoughts and then we'll come back to this. And see if we think it's covered elsewhere.
Well, someplace and we can wait, we get there, but the planning department is. Is a non-functioning and I say that with love for all the people that are. Working their little fannies off, but the planning department, well, yeah, we have one person in planning now. That the planning department. Has to be supported and restructured and rebuilt and, and it's just. We are not meeting anywhere close to the basic responsibility of county government. And in any side of the planning from natural resource to cannabis to direct planning.
Yeah, that was a big conversation last time. I do recall that now.
So, so if this goes in someplace later, that's fine.
So considering the formation of a natural resource division, is that where you're?
Yeah, I, I would use the term reef reformation since we used to have one, but.
Do we want to?
You know, we have to have a functioning cannabis department, number one, which is, you know, we may or may not keep into planning, right? So that's, that's one large decision to make. We have to have a planning department so somebody can go get a lot line adjustment, not wait 10 years, let alone. Try to do a subdivision that has been on the books since. Well, Jeremy was a young man anyway. And, and number three is that we lose a lot, you know, we talk about. Other places wanting to be active in firefighting and, and all these other natural resource issues, but we have nobody to even send to a meeting. So yeah, the formation of a natural resource department. And I mean, that alone, I could see 10 to 15 people being hired just to accomplish that. And how that's paid for and all that, but you know, we can't even find the people to spend the money that we allot to it.
Yeah. And we do have a staff capacity issue. Again, we'll, we'll get to that later, but you may find that we can import some of this down there or leave it, but we can certainly make that decision. Okay.
Jim, I'm going to interrupt you for one second because we were on the previous item and, and we just paused to say. Have you seen other counties find some avenues towards solving some of these? And I, I would ask you that here as well. Finding, finding help is, you know, certainly not unique to us, but have you, have you seen anybody else? Go down a path that was more successful than we're finding ourselves right now?
You're talking about general, general, particular staff resources in certain, in key areas?
I am.
Yeah, yeah. I think we talked last time about what, what everybody's trying to experiment with, and that is to do some. You know, external, I mean, everything is. These days, a lot of the barriers we used to have. Have been removed as far as remote work, you know, importing expertise, importing capacity. From outside the county. I know that was, it was a major issue last time. We talked about just the, the, the pool. Of expertise and talent. If you're going to stay within county walls, it's, it's just not feasible. So whether it's a multi-county agreement, which I know you have in certain other areas, or whether it's importing expertise. Which 90% of the time does not have to be present physically. And that can be imported virtually. I mean, this is at least from my limited view of what I've seen as far as HR. Innovation and resources now kind of exploring those kinds of things. And I don't know whether you've, you've done that yet. Looking outside the county for particular expertise where you could have a virtual unit perform certain functions that. Certainly some things have to be, have a presence and understand intimately what goes on. In the county and planning may very well be one of them, but, but there are others perhaps that, that, that is not. An essential requirement. So it's that, that kind of, kind of, you know. Invention, the mother of necessity, kind of looking at just not within your own expertise, but far and wide. And having arrangements where you get imported services or you've got virtual remote workers who can bring that. I mean, that's not a complete answer for sure, but I, I know there are a lot investigating how to, how to, how to do that. As people's lifestyles, priorities change as far as where and how they want to work. That's the future.
Right.
Okay.
And we've got all day. I brought dinner.
We've got a half an hour before we open it up for public comment, guys. So let's keep moving.
So Santa Cruz has really good online affordable housing permitting process where you have, I think, three templated, pre-approved. Plans for home and septic. And as long as you're parcel and you're zoning and I don't know if you have to submit a soil type or what, or if it's all predetermined based on. You know, geoanalysis by the county, they have it. So you can go online, pay, and you can start building and, or developing within two weeks. Trinity County might be harder because we have so many different regions and ranges and topographies and stuff, but something to look at. And to expand on that would be just having an IT person give an assessment of what further online services can we provide? We have tax, tax payments online now. That is something we have accomplished in the last three years or four years. So there has been, you know, some, some progress. Something that I've always wondered, you know, what is the process when someone turns in any, any county project permit application or any application? Is it like a sandwich line at the grocery store where you, you know, you get your number and they're finishing the sandwich or two or three in front of you? And then you'll, they'll start on yours. Or is it, you know, does it jump around a lot more? I think. I don't know. And the public probably doesn't know. What is the real process for an application when it goes behind the, the front desk? And is there a way of, of shedding light on that process? So a person can be like, oh, I turned in my application. So now I've got an automatic. Appointment generated two months down the road. That worst case scenario, I know in two months, I'm going to have a face to face appointment about this application. Something another county has done is Madera County, they built their own county phone app. Because a lot of people use their phones more than the internet.
Right.
Search web browser actually now. And so their, their app list for what residents and tourists you could choose. And depending on which one you chose, it would show what was available to you. A lot of the services they shared or that you can utilize are for. Animal complaints, code enforcement violations, environmental health complaints, road hazards and repairs. And Trinity does have some of these on our online, but not on an app. And that's kind of a nice aspect. So something to look at would be, yeah, maybe we should have a, a county app to make it easier for people.
And I, and I think your, your comment of, of having an IT professional kind of look at all of those available options, look at your situation. And so I think if there is a deliverable here. It's to do that kind of opening your eyes assessment of what's possible, what's available, what have others done, et cetera. And it's similar to some of the other things you said, but. This, you're looking for that innovation. So why not have somebody come in and say, here's some things that other counties are doing with limited resources that might help in your situation. So it seems like a very good strategy. To include here. To include here.
Oh, one last thing. Jim, where we had said we would like to see the reformation of that natural resources department. So this isn't another department, but within planning. It would be nice to see the reformation of the subdivision. Committee that we had so that we were serving somebody that wanted to do a subdivision. We get everybody to the table to help them streamline that process. So we get all of the utilities there. So. Have one conversation about what's needed and they're not running around to every special district trying to. Figure out what all those pieces are, but we sit down and do it once in a in a really succinct kind of a way.
Excellent, excellent, excellent. Okay.
I, yeah, I don't know. That that's been disbanded more than the fact that we don't have the potential to induce subdivision. So I think that's still in place. Because we don't have any subdivisions to review.
Okay, so instead of reformation, you could.
Re rejuvenation. All right, okay.
I'm not 100% positive.
Okay.
I was on the subdivision. A long time. Right, because we haven't done a subdivision in years.
Okay, ready? Section two.
We're not done?
No, we're not.
This is this is my best me right now.
Okay, all right. Communication outreach and engagements. Couple of issues here, state, federal and county relations. With state and federal entities and community engagement and leader development. So we have by 2025, Trinity County has a greater presence. And influence at the state and federal levels to secure increased funding and shape reasonable policy that is sensitive to the needs of a rural county. Now, again, this is something. That you have mentioned in a couple of places already is, you know, understanding what funding is available, seeking to have visibility and a voice there. So. This is one of those issues that may have some deliverables of its own. Or you may find this is an issue that needs to pop up in multiple places. And you already again mentioned. Mentioned some of these. So is there a specific deliverable here other than maybe investigating what's what's more of what's available and where you need to have a presence? Or is this does this show up in other places?
One thing that might be nice, Jim, is to use this section as a place to gather all of those pieces that we stick in the other areas so that we can see that. In in one.
Yeah.
One spot just to keep these more top of mind.
Funding, where voices needed. Got it. Yeah, great idea.
For me, one of my goals always with a CAO is to have the CAO. Not be bound down into the muck of everyday life and and. And to have a broader spectrum to bring these things forward. So I guess the delivery will is to. To when we hire a CAO to have that part of their is their job. And. In in make recommendations to us to. For example, do we hire a lobbyist? You know. On T PUD. We had lobbyists and man, it was nice.
We do have lobbyists.
Well, you have lobbyists that lobby for everybody else.
Yes.
In the county. But do you have a lone lobbyist? Not that you're paying for all of them, but a lobbyist that is concerned only about Trinity County views.
Yeah.
And we, we work with R C R C, but I did reach out to Modoc Sisku. And I think it was Del Nord. To see if we could share. And two were interested, one wasn't. And then so. But I, yeah, I agree with Keith. If we had somebody who was just primarily Northern California and then spent. A large portion of their time in Trinity would be would be very helpful in Sacramento.
Excellent. Okay, what else?
Yeah, the NACO is, you know, our national advocacy group. So I I can say pretty strongly that we have. Not fully utilized that opportunity. I don't really know the history with it and how long we've been a member of NACO, but. There's, you know, NACO is full of subcommittees and if you advocate for a subcommittee. You can get the board of each subcommittee to take on a resolution of your request. And if NACO takes on a resolution on on your request or other counties' interests, then that goes to the. Top administration official who's responsible for that issue or that department. So. Whatever the issue may be, you know, the general ones are pilled and SRS. But. If Trinity can identify a specific. You know, prior priority issue that needs national resolution essentially, NACO is the opportunity for that. Will we need a lobbyist to still help? Probably if it's something really, really good, but. We we haven't fully utilized what NACO offers, and I can say probably similar for R C R C. Just on Wednesday, at my request, R C R C did form a cannabis ad hoc committee to look at state and federal. Issues and how they play into local cannabis. Communities in California.
Excellent.
So that's, you know, that's an example of what R C R C can do. And we don't ask for something every month or even every year. And so really maximizing our asks, getting our voice a little bit louder and as a better unified front because I don't know. I don't feel that I feel like the board we have now in Trinity County is a better. Representation of what Trinity County is than past boards. No offense to past board members or anything, but I'm really. Happy with the diversity that this board brings to the table, and it's a good opportunity to have a consensus on these priority issues. For NACO or for CSAC or for R C R C and then really get. Better backing from all of our neighboring counties to support us on those as well. If there's any, you know, we might be in with all the other issues with other counties, but if there is something unique to Trinity, these are good avenues to address them.
Excellent. And that coupled with having, you know, as a part of the responsibility of the CAO to really having that eye on on the ball at that level is is a good combination. All right, community engagement and leader development. A strategy has been implemented to conduct outreach at regular intervals with key sectors of the community. Such as downtown business owners. To share ideas and needs and provide input that can support informed decision making. So more of a process milestone, but a way to. Continually have good input and information flow from the county to its major key sectors, community sectors. And again, I know you do some of this, but is there a particular deliverable? To keep that flow of communication open that you'd like to see happen in the next 12 months?
It would be cool if there was an electronic. Platform and not Facebook, not something that people can respond with all of their bashing and negativity, but. Something that just provides. Access that more than like not just the county website, because that has to be updated by county members, but. Or maybe that can be broadened. I really don't know. But where our. Different really influential groups all around the county can update their part of it, and then maybe something flows onto a a big community calendar. Where, you know, the journal tries really hard to create a community calendar and say what's going on, but if it was something that. You know, I know at different times there are just people who say, well, I would have gone to that had I known. And so I think we just need some kind of platform for increased communication. Where it's a broader range of. Representatives can give input and update.
That could be the county app.
There you go. Excellent. There you go. Part of a county app. Here you go. Okay. Excellent. Excellent. Anything else here? Again, I think I think what we. Discovered in the initial. Outreach and input that we gathered in in preparing just for this process. What value there was in allowing important sectors of the community to have this kind of regular interchange and voice. And I think that's part of the genesis of this issue here. Anything else? Okay.
Well, I I'm not sure if it fits in here as community engagement or leader development, but I do think that one of the places we need to engage with our community is. On a hiring level, we need to be engaging at the high schools and stuff like that to try to recruit. People to work for the county and people to be be engaged. And I don't know if that would be through the job fairs or. Whatever, but we need to, we need to have a presence in the high school as an employer and show people that. Maybe if they don't want to go to college next year, they have a job that they can come to and and start working, you know, it's like. Make that a. A viable option for high school age kids and give them a pass. Or they can actually work their way up through the. System and. Get to even the department head position without. And that was, that's one of the things I'd really like to see us engage with is is recruitment because we're having major difficulty going. Outside the county and recruiting high level. We need to start inside and build them.
Yeah, again, working more upstream, just like you mentioned with a couple of other issues. I mean, yes, it takes longer, but what a wonderful longer term solution. Being more preventative or upstream.
And we should probably engage us to college with that process too, because if we just focus on the high school, we may have some students that have graduated one or two or even more years out. That have maybe been taking some coursework that would feed into a particular. Opening that we have. So I think we shouldn't limit it.
And maybe have some types of internships or something where they can get practical experience. And yeah, that's really very. Forward thinking to deal with a an issue again that that many are.
I could use two interns about eight hours a week.
Yeah, sure.
California, you have to pay interns full.
That's true. That's true. All right. Let's try to, let's try to make it through at least another couple of these here. Growth and development. Okay, so these are, we had a couple of. Four issues here, a couple again, very deemed as more of a an urgency or opportunity priority. Housing affordability and inventory barriers to the development of housing that will meet the growing needs of the community have been evaluated and mitigated where feasible. Yeah, right. So again, this there, this may be an area where you have some things already moving, but let's talk about the next 12 months on this.
I think in that we have to get back to. We have to have a planning department and we have to have a planning department that functions. That's I we can't do anything without. That that has to be the number one to.
Yeah, yeah, makes sense. Right.
If there was something else, I would say just identifying the potential actual parcels, if there's vacant parcels. That are sitting unused. In areas of the county. At least on a on a introductory level, being able to look at those parcels and. And even if it's a supervisor or a county resident, being able to say, is this something that could qualify for low income housing development? Or for a county staff housing development, something like that.
The reality is without number one, Jeremy. There is no anything else. So.
Just want to make our strategic plan as if number one's never going to exist.
This is, we only have a year to do this part. We have to get our planning department.
I'm just saying that there there's two issues that that we are working on. And one is the the general plan. And so there is no. Quite, which will do what you're asking. For the most part. It will go through and identify parcels through. Now it won't be on a spreadsheet. Well, maybe it will. I don't know what new new modern ones will do. But it will go through in in in. Change zonings and allow for housing and staffing. And then then you have to have a functioning planning department.
Right.
And. Otherwise, now, if you're talking about building a house, yeah, we can build a house, but. Just. A a two parcel or yeah, two parcels split is probably two or three years away.
Yeah.
And another item under this, I'm sorry, Jimmy.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I was just gonna say the board may need to get involved with what is transpiring now with homeowners insurance. So there's a lot developing there and some of it looks like it's just homeowners may be needing to prove that they've hardened around in order to get that, but. This may or may not require some advocating. So people won't be able to build if they can't get insurance.
Right.
And people won't be able to live here. I mean, over half heart county now is on the state program.
Right.
And most of our businesses now.
And put class K in there because.
Yeah, that's that's a deliverable.
Nothing, that's a relative. It's in action, not in action, in development is in action.
Ask K.
Yes.
Is that what she said?
Yes. It's not really called that, but it'll work for our purposes.
All right. And again, when you hit on something like a function planning department that is a priority in multiple issues, when we eventually kind of look across this plan. And identify, you know, a half a dozen to a dozen. Critical priorities for the first year. I mean, that one, the repetitiveness is going to help you kind of. Unearth a handful of priorities across the plan that resources be what they are. You know, you you're going to want to move forward. And so the repetitiveness is just fine in this instance. Because it helps us identify potential priorities.
So do we want to prioritize that list of five?
Not yet. I think we will in the next round, but but I what I'm hearing you say is that number one seems to be number one.
Well, it's always number one, but I mean, what what is going to come first out of those five bullet points you have there?
Well, yeah. Is, say it again.
Yeah, general plan is in process and next month we have a meeting coming. So that's moving. Class K is moving. Everybody agrees that planning department functioning.
Is number one. No, I I understand.
Yeah.
It seems to me out of those five things. Class K is probably going to be a reality before some of the other things are.
It will be passed or not passed before anything else. Yeah.
Okay.
Done with it first.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll come, we'll come back to that kind of assessment for sure. Okay, then we then we had small business development by 2025, working with the chamber as a partner, Trinity County has assessed opportunities for. Small business development and provides targeted programs and resources to stimulate growth. Again, this you may find that this is. Has a lot of synergy with the issue right before it, when you look at, you know, general planning, etc. But are there specific areas here that you'd like to call out?
I'll go. You can put up the T O T T bid considerations. And and I would put the the ultimate deliverable would be the formation of an economic development team or department.
Jeremy, wouldn't you put the T bid down under the tourism hospitality?
Yeah, we do have. Yeah, no, you're right. Here, let me just quickly, yeah, let me just quickly move that.
Experience matters.
Well, let's look at these two in tandem here because you've got a milestone for tourism and hospitality, a cohesive. Coordinated and adequately funded strategies in place to market Trinity County's premier destination. And one of the things through the interviews and research we did last time, obviously, was. The realization that you well have known for many years that there are different players working on pieces of this, but not. In a coordinated cohesive way for sure. And are you really maximizing resources in that regard? And hence this issue was. Sort of born out of that. Realization.
So on Jeremy's formation of economic development is. Is in the June meeting, you know, we requested that the general plan give us an offer of. Of a economic development. A portion of that, and we have not heard back on on how much that would cost. So that would be a consideration that in that June meeting. That we could say. You know, is that something we can do?
The general plan would look at the potential formation of a department?
Well, it would have an element. It would have a economic element in that, which would. A couple of reasons that would. A couple of reasons that would give people that are doing planning in the future that these are priorities in that. But also we could recommend and and start and come up with a plan to form form a a department.
Anything else under the tourism hospitality piece as well?
I'm a little uncomfortable with the with that we're only working with the chamber. Our chambers are not. Powerful economic drivers of business like most chambers. Our chambers are more tourist oriented and. Funny thing is, I never realized that. I thought the way our chambers operators weigh all chambers until I. Joined like reading chambers where it's just totally business.
Right.
It's, you know, you you're there to, hey buddy, I make this, I sell wine, you. And you make wine. So hey, let me sell your product. And that's not way our chambers work. So as. I mean, as delivering brochures or getting people to the county, yeah, but it it seems to me we need something more than just working with the chambers.
Yeah, I broaden that a little bit. See what you think. I because again, you don't really know yet, but. Working with the chambers and others in partnership and that's that's vague, but but you're to to your point, that isn't necessarily the focus there.
Well, and the chamber works with Visit California, which is a statewide tourism um thing. But it maybe we should consider should Trinity County also have its own independent. But whether it's a a free or a paid for advertising or outreach or. Yeah.
Yeah, that could be also tied to your tall T bid. D O T issue.
Yeah, I think we need a strong push from either an ad hoc committee or the board. To get T O T passed.
Yeah.
And it would double the uh. Chambers budget.
I heard that as a volunteer.
I don't mind volunteering. But I am supervisor of a district that has no motels or anywhere to. I don't mind at all being on that.
Okay, um, I we've got about five minutes before we at least plan to open things up for some comments. So there's one more issue here, obviously. Just a little minor i- i- issue here in this section. Um. So why don't we see if we can talk about this and then um if we can circle back, obviously we will, but um under the cannabis. Issue, the community is more informed about the cannabis industry and the county has explored opportunities to take advantage of a thriving cannabis industry with a view toward public safety and risk management.
Well, thriving part has changed in the last year, it seems like.
Okay.
Well, I think one of the key deliverables that would be really good is actually issue a secret compliant. Annual license. That would be. Incredible if we could just do that.
The that we are already have have a deliverable on more informed about cannabis industry. We have formed ad hoc which. Spins just into the public. Uh, we've probably done 50 hours of public. Basically, it's an hour and a half a day, an hour to an hour and a half once a week of public. Information about the cannabis industry.
Good. Yeah, I I want to include major. Activity going on because I think again, looking at where you're spending your resources, we should reflect what you already are doing in a major way in these areas. Um, which is great. Okay. Any other comments here?
Jill, what what do you think?
I want to go to a retail store.
I think. I think that one of the things that we need to to consider as a deliverable here is and it's. It's it's less concrete, but I think equally, if not more important, is that there needs to be a way that. Our community gets on the same page and you know how we facilitate that as a board, how we. Perhaps bring in professionals like yourself. I know a couple of years ago, the um Trinity Together. Hired a consultant that focused on difficult conversations, how to communicate with people. And and end up on the same page in some regard. So that we're not just all the time butting heads over substance. Um, but.
Yeah.
Finding a way, I mean, we're we're talking about communities that are vibrant and thriving and you're never going to have that if there's um. Not a meeting of the minds on all things. You know, and when we define safety, you know, again, there's there's substance there and then there's also perception and.
Right.
People's perceptions of what makes them feel safe also matters and it can't just be defined in a way that says, well. You know, with with a deliverable that's. How many seconds it takes for, you know, a response when you call nine one one, something like that. Um, it's, do I feel like I can put my child on a bicycle and they can go get a treat at the grocery store by themselves? You know, what that means to one parent might be different than what that means to another parent and I think. Finding some way there and um, you know, in in the work that you do, Jim, you probably know exactly. Um, what I'm talking about and maybe a a means to that end.
Yeah, well, it's having, it's having critical conversations, it's having difficult conversations where there's a lot of history, a lot of diverging points of view, a lot of entrenched positioning. Um, a lot of mixture of uh real tangible um things and perceptions. It's, you know, the ability to, and this is not a, this is not a a a quick fix either. It's a, it's a, it's a kind of a commitment to. Allowing for a lot of open dialogue and building consensus in little bits because you're changing. You're changing perceptions, which is on the one end of the scale, the most difficult thing to do. Versus just providing somebody with technical information. You can provide you technical information, I can understand it. But it doesn't necessarily mean that I believe it or that I'm going to internalize it and adopt it as my own point of view. So you're working with a very broad spectrum here of not just providing information. But when you say trying to unify the community around an issue, then all those other things have to be taken into account. So. You know, it's it's, but it's important work at the same time, but I I don't know.
Almost harder work, really.
It's a very, it's it's a lot harder work than even getting something technical passed. Because it's all of those range of understanding to feelings, to perceptions, to mindsets that you have to take into account, and that's not easy.
Right.
Yeah.
Keith.
It it would take. Why a really talented professional uh to to do that and that that would be just wonderful. I I think one of the frustrations that, you know, I've slogged away in this industry's problems for 15 years, that one of the. Huge frustrations is the fact that people don't participate but have total opinions.
Right.
That that we have these meetings, meeting after meeting after meeting. And then you read a newspaper and somebody that refuses to participate. Then then is bashing what's going on instead of people. I don't, I don't know how you get the community to open their hearts or their minds. To to something when they're so entrenched and and we can, you know, our country has so many of these examples lately.
Oh, yeah.
Of of that you're red, I'm blue, you're purple, I'm green. And and so we have sides, we pick teams in this county. And are are you're either a pro team or an anti team and and there's no. You know, your rivals and and man, I would love to see somebody come in and, you know, break the barrier down. And and I'm all for trying to figure that out, but.
Yeah, well, you you mentioned a couple of really important things. Number one. It's also a very difficult time to do this in our country today because there is such. Entrenched disparate points of view that don't appeal to information or, you know, like it's it's a very challenging time to 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 do this period. But the other thing too, and then you could get somebody, a group to come in and and search, start to have this conversation and try to implement a strategy, but the but the end of the day is those people go away. And you're still left as a county with having to continue and have avenues and systems in place for the continued dialogue to happen. And the right information to go out at the right time. I mean, somebody can come in and get you started and get things moving, but you know, that's not a long term solution. Uh, at e- either you got to have consistent messaging, you got to have the systems in place. So this is a big, this is a big. Task here. It doesn't mean you shouldn't start thinking about how to do it, but it certainly is not a one year deliverable. Let's put it that way.
Yeah, somehow what we see in the public meetings that we get, the people that have participated for months. Form empathy for the other side. And once you get some form empathy.
Standing. Yep, yep.
That that, well. I mean, you do, you start seeing compromise, but the problem that that we see is that. Uh, first off, how are you going to get a a large part of the community to participate in something for a year? And and gain that and um but it is, it is nice to sit and watch the people just on opposite sides, say, do I like that person? How can we figure out to fix your problem?
Yeah.
And and not ruin, you know, not make my problem worse.
Well, we could, we could talk about this for a very long time, but I but I think I think you need to realize.
They have been.
Well, I know you have, but I think you need to realize that you have to start with what you can do, you know, and if there are people. Willing to spend that kind of time and eventually get to a place where they're hearing. Never mind open to, but hearing other points of view and trying to understand them. I mean, you start, you have to start there. You can't just have a goal of. Total community unity for sure, but um, but but yeah, you've got to have reasonable baby steps here, but it sounds like you've. You've really are doing this i- in the guise of what a public entity does, you already are doing some of this. So anyway.
So one more thing, Jim, the most deliverable thing on these three bullet points here is issuing sequel compliant annual licenses. You know, we do have a new cannabis director and plenty of millions of dollars to. Get out some licenses. I was surprised the day not to see any um noticed in the paper. I think that we are losing a lot of buy in from the legal cannabis industry because of. The um. Lack of getting annual licenses out now and to know. I think Keith and and Dan are doing a good job at that, but um somehow. In translation here, we are just not getting any annual licenses.
We should have a a. A pretty good update for you at and next Tuesday's meeting.
Okay, all right.
I just want to throw one little last thing in there because, you know, this is obviously a bigger issue, but um uh kind of linking to that strategy, sometimes when you get too close to any certain topic. It can become really challenging to navigate the common ground and to back away and look at the bigger picture. Um, and this and this reference, I would, I would say, you know. Almost everyone probably either likes Trinity County or moved to Trinity County because they appreciated their freedom, their freedom of choice. And I think that's something that will probably resonate with most people. And and, you know, I'm not saying you need to put freedom of choice on on the strategic plan or anything, but, you know. Um, you can go into the grocery store and and walk by plenty of alcohol to kill plenty of people. And we've, this community has normalized that, as have many communities. And and not everybody agrees with alcohol, but it's been normalized. And so looking at a comparable. Yeah, tobacco, caffeine. You know, looking at comparables and and figuring out, well, how did we work through that issue? Because it's already been done. You know, if we said we're going to go ahead and and pull alcohol out of the markets and you're going to have to go buy it from a separate store, there would be protests, I'm pretty sure. Um, and and some people would agree with that and some people might not. And so to have comparables that people can relate to, that people participate in already. I think is a valuable mechanism.
You haven't been in Oregon to try to buy a bottle of booze, have you?
All right, it is, it is almost 20 of, and we really do need to move to um some time for uh for some public comments. So we are. A couple of sections. I'm sorry?
Can we take a five minute break?
Um, I I let's let Jim finishes uh his idea of how to proceed and then we will probably, we'll definitely take a break before we move into public comment.
Yeah, I I just say, obviously, as you can see, we have, we have two sections of the plan left to go, so I will find ways between now and the next meeting that we can at least have. Uh, a base of of information that we can bring to the next meeting and 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 finish it because we have a number of things we we need to do. Um, in the final meeting that we have together as well. So let me stop there. If you want to take a break, obviously do what you need to do. Are we still planning to end at 11?
Um, if if you're available, we we don't have to end at 11 and uh we don't have times on our agenda so that. Uh, we don't have to open the public comment at a time specific either. So.
All right.
If you're available, we can, we can keep going. We can take a short break and come back and and plow on through this if you want to do it.
Yeah, let's, oh, well, I was, I was gonna y- kind of stop here and then see if there's any public comment on anything else, anything we've discussed so far. If you'd like to continue on. With these issues, I'm I'm game for that as well. Um, if we could take a, if we want to take a five minute break and then go to 11 15?
Yeah, we can, um, we and we can, uh, we don't have to, we don't have to be run by the clock either. We can kind of go as we need to. So um, yeah, we'll, we'll take a break, come back at 10:45. And then we'll, we'll just kind of go from there.
All right, very good.
All right, thank you.
See you guys in a minute. See you guys in a minute.
So. All right, it's.
And maybe we won't grind away here all day.
It's ten forty-five, so, um, do you want to carry on anymore? Um, do you have anything else to add, Jim, before I open public comment?
Well, uh, so here's the decision, I can, I can go to eleven thirty myself. So if you want to try to knock out a couple of more issues and then open things up, we can, we, that would be great. Um, or we can move right to, to public comment as well, so, um, I'd like to try to get through as many issues.
There's our time constraint. Uh, well, Jim's here till eleven thirty, so. Um, I, it's, it's hard to anticipate the length of public comment.
Right.
So, um, I think what I would. Do is open the public comment on the first section, so we've already went through. And if we don't get any public comment or little public comment, then we can try to go from there, so.
Okay.
And if public comment eats up the last forty-five minutes we have, then we'll just have to work with that later. So, um, with that, I guess I will open up the public comment on the, on the sections of the strategic plan that we've already went through and. Um, see what we have.
Okay. Um, we do have a raised hand. Jim, do you mind if I take over screen sharing for a moment?
Oh, yes, very good, absolutely, there you go, you got it.
Thank you. And Veronica, whenever you're ready.
Um, good morning, Veronica Kelly Albe's Douglas City. And I want to thank you guys for, um, giving some, um, process to all of this. And, you know, uh, something struck me that Keith was saying about those who attend the meetings and, and I would like to just kinda start off with. What, you know, meetings aren't always, the times that they are, aren't always conducive to having a lot of people during the day that work. I utilize my lunchtime and I choose to do that, to attend meetings. Um, so, and I also want to encourage you guys to continue to respect each other at these meetings. Um, you know, sometimes faces, voices, words, um, you know, to the public, it becomes difficult to watch. Um, when we want to be a team in doing all of this. Um, I do have some thoughts on, uh, the things that you guys have covered. Um, by the way, very thorough, they look, I mean, great thought and research with the things you're bringing in. I love the idea of including the high school and Shasta College, um, students, uh, in the process. Because they can be very beneficial to bring through an internship. And just to correct something, Keith, you can do unpaid internships with, uh, students. There is a way, um, and it has to be very beneficial to the students. I utilize them where I work. Um, I worked closely with the school and with TECLA and Trinity together in the past. Um, but it's a brilliant idea to start getting our local kids involved in local government. Um, on the chambers, again, we actually have two chambers, there's a Trinity County, there's the Weaverville, there may be, I think those are the ones that I know of. But also love the idea of working with other groups because we want to represent Trinity County as a whole in that small business development. Um, we do absolutely need an economic, economic development team, board, however you come up with it. Um, I would like to encourage recreational development, um, under tourism and hospitality. Um, even like with Jeremy's recent project, you know, that will also increase tourism. And it was exciting to see you guys invest in, uh, moving forward recreation. There are a lot of exciting things that are happening in Trinity County in that department. I would like to see that continue to be, um, developed and supported by, uh, the board. Um, I think that's all I have right now, based on the time available. And, and as you continue talking, I may have some more if that happens. Um, but we definitely need a general plan. Almost all of this, that has to be a priority. Many of these programs are going through a, a rushed process that don't really involve solid planning. Um, and it doesn't really involve all of the community's thoughts and wishes. So that general plan really has to be priority. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
John Brower?
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, Jim, thank you for facilitating this discussion. Um, you know, I think the county, uh, leadership is, uh, is better than it's been in a long time right now. We got, uh, we got a good board of supervisors, um, that seem to be functioning better. Than the board has functioned in a long time. And a lot of these things are well underway. Um, but missing, missing key components, which is, seems to be staffing, staffing, staffing at this point. Um, so, working down the list from the top, uh, public health, behavioral health, social services. Um, that department, uh, seems to be functioning real well and they did a great job through the COVID thing. Um, and I, I think that can kinda continue, uh, what they've been doing. The communication utility infrastructure, uh, T-PUD's facing serious challenges at this point. Um, I think gonna be a big part of the conversation moving forward, um, and of course, the broadband thing. Uh, Supervisor Morris put a lot of work into that for years. Um, and it continues to be a, a major challenge to Trinity joining the, the information, uh, era. Um, so we'd love to see that continue. Um, the, uh, the public safety and code enforcement, um. Supervisor Groves hit the nail on the head. Um, he ensured from, from day one of our local cannabis program. That the cannabis licensees would, uh, pay the way for cannabis code enforcement. It was, uh, a big demand from his constituents and, uh, the cannabis community, uh, that did, that has attempted licensure. Um, have mostly bought into that and, and I think it's a source of pride, uh, uh, for many that, um. You know, that they're contributing to the health and safety of the county and trying to do their part for this transition. Um, and we've got a good sheriff right now who is really strong on the administrative and organizational side. And, uh, you know, he's made his ass crystal clear, he needs money. He's got to outcompete the surrounding jurisdictions to attract and retain talent. Um, so we, we know what needs to be done there. Um, I think we can mostly continue, uh, what's been started there, we just gotta find him some money. Um, the, uh, uh, where am I here? The, uh, um, the service delivery, um, you know, planning department, uh. Has had a leadership vacuum for a long time. And, um, it's the current sore spot in the, in the county. It's most, it's the area of greatest dysfunction, um, that includes cannabis. Um, there's a serious lack of communication, uh, with the public. Um, that needs to be addressed, addressed immediately and, and it seems it, it may be.
Uh, your time's up, your time's up, John, so if you have further, um, input you want to add? Go ahead and put those bullet points down or whatever and email that to me and I'll, I'll get that out to the remainder of the board.
Awesome, I'll do that, thank you.
Okay, uh, Liz Hamilton?
Hi, good morning, Board Liz Hamilton, Health and Human Services Director. Um, I just want to voice, um, my excitement and support for this planning process and the inclusion of the public. And, um, hearing your thoughts has been very helpful as you guys have questioned and, um, commented on each item. Um, you know, I'll limit my kinda comments right now to just the first part that is highlighting, um, social services, public health and behavioral health. And I think the broader terminology that I would like to see used, um, from, away from mental health and substance use. And abuse would be, um, whole person care and social determinants of health, um, as the state really models. Looking at all, um, human issues, um, and, you know, I look forward to further conversations and including, you know, experts within. Our department to this conversation, thank you.
Thank you.
I have no other raised hands? Oh.
Hello?
Yep, go for it.
Go ahead.
On the phone?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, Terrence Mines Junction City. Um, I was listening to everybody and some of the comments here today and, uh, everybody is, I think, on the same page, which is good. Trying to better the community. Think that's a really important feat here, but I think we have a problem here because we're talking about accountability. Right now with the cannabis farmers. The, the, there is a problem with the way it's being handled, that the county unfortunately made some mistakes in the process. And some of the personnel weren't quite qualified to handle implementing a licensing program and a SEQA. And so, we have a problem that's come of a situation that the county made some mistakes. And instead of handling that accountability, which is what you guys are all speaking about here. They're pushing the penalty onto the farmers. It's, the county of Mendocino has the exact same problem, but they didn't do that. They, uh, made it so the farmers could continue to cultivate while they worked their way through SEQA. I'm not sure why this county is doing something to push the burden onto the farmers when it's actually not legal. It's a capricious, apprecious issue. I think you need to speak with the county council because you're gonna end up with some litigation here on this pretty soon. Um, and that's not to benefit any of us. To benefit all of us is to get the farmers cultivating and make sure that they have a chance because this is extremely time sensitive. I know that unfortunately, a lot of people have already given up and they're leaving. There are a few of us that are very committed to trying to make this work because just like I've heard a lot of people speak about having jobs for the kids for the futures. And I would love Mrs. Albe's ideas of tourism coming back, I think it'd be wonderful. I think we fight fires a lot, but I think it'd be great, I think it should be supported too, but we have to be realistic here. This is a multi-billion dollar industry, um, it's taking shape and we can't afford to have the farmers take this year off. You guys need to do, you, you just gotta go to that empathy thing you're talking about. You gotta look at the big picture here. You guys are doing something that's extremely unethical, it's not legal. And you better get with county council quick because it's not the farmers that made this mistake on SEQA. It was the planning department. So you have to take accountability and it starts today with this problem that I brought to your attention. Sorry that I have to do it, but it's actually the truth and it's the honest, it's honest. And you, and you have to do what's right here. You guys need to fix this and do it immediately. Thank you.
All right, with that, I believe we have no other raised hands. And no new chats, so Chair, I will turn it back to you.
All right. Jim, do you want to try to jump through?
Yeah, let's get going to. Absolutely. That would be terrific. All right, let me go back down to where we were here. Um.
Uh, just for the record, I would like to clarify, uh, if we reopen public comment, we will have to reopen it for everyone. And people will be able to comment again on the items we discuss further.
Okay.
Just for the record and for everyone listening.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, all right, so we were, we were, uh, just about to start, uh, the third section of the, the document. Which, uh, has a, a central singular important issue. Uh, the management of natural resources and our milestone for 2025 was through multi-agency support and coordination. Trinity County has greater influence and local control over the use and manage it, management of its natural resources, including forests and water. So, let's, uh, let's have a discussion of what is currently the situation and are there deliverables for the first year of the plan?
Formation of the natural resource department, I think that's, that's up there.
Right.
Or position, maybe it's a.
I don't.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that will be able to be done in 2023, but.
But it's a.
Working on that would be.
Um, I think something that would be deliverable in twenty-two or twenty-three would be, um, working with NACO along these lines. Um, using, uh. Outlets we do have to try to get more input.
Or identifying potential funding for the formation.
There you go. Um. If we could better coordinate as a board on our individual, because I think each board member is gonna have a, a role someplace along this line. And take different bites out of the sandwich here. I know that, you know, me and Jeremy have been on those fire phone calls. Uh, so maybe we could sit down and. See all the different things that we're doing individually and then come up with a plan as a board as a whole.
And so Keith, would me and you be willing to speak out about the, I know it's the tough year now, probably next year, about the local control of our water? Which is not totally locally controlled at all.
Uh, yeah, I think that would be part of this if, you know, I'm, I'm putting the, the fire into that natural resource part. I, you know, uh, we have the collaborative where we're, we're looking at, you know, forest and, and that. I, and I don't, I haven't kept up with that, so where we're at in that. We have the, the TMC water side of that, and then we're starting to do the fire side of that. I think one of our weaknesses now is besides that, we're not coordinating, but there seems to be a lot of money. Uh, coming out in this forest from the state and the feds and, and forest health and management. And we just, I don't, there's, doesn't seem to be a real organized event in that for us. Uh, and maybe other supervisors are working on things that I don't know about. But again, you know, having that natural resource side where it says, hey, there's a grant for five million dollars to clean along roads or, you know, whatever. Uh, I, I think for now, especially since we're not gonna have a CAO for maybe up to a year, a year and a half, whatever it's gonna take. You know, each one of us taking a bite. You know, each one of us taking a bite will, will maybe help and get us moving.
Okay.
So I guess identifying where we need to be is, I guess, though. That's, that makes me sound smart when you say it that way.
That's my job. Okay, anything else in this area?
It's only 98% of our county. That's how important.
Exactly, exactly. Hence, why this was an issue. Exactly.
Um, I guess you could add, um, you could add a um, discussion on good neighbor authority. You can put that on there. And that's with the US Forest Service.
And I may be reaching for the stars here, um, but I'm going to keep trying. I think that figuring out a way that the communication that we have with our forest supervisor connects to the higher levels in Washington. I think that we have the same goals here locally and I think that there's a gap between our forest supervisors level and our, um,
Chief of the Forest.
Mm-hmm. Um, and I'm not sure what can be done there. I think those hands are tied, but I think finding ways to work with is, is really important.
All right, um, not looking for a long list here, but I think you hit on a few important things. And again, things that relate to other areas um, that we can perhaps synthesize uh, in the next go around. Um, all right, ready to move on to the, an issue that we've been talking about the whole time here. It's the uh, last section of the plan, which is county governance and operations. Uh, and clearly there were two, three issues here, uh, all of which are more process oriented, but of resource focused, but clearly impact every single other issue in the plan itself. Uh, and again, I can, I can look at sort of synthesizing some things and bringing things down and up in, in, in relatable pockets, but staff capacity, uh, alternative strategy by 2025, alternative strategies for enhancing staff capacity have been explored and implemented. And we've talked about some of those. A comprehensive staff development plan is in place, including training, succession planning, effective recruiting and compensation practices.
So I think that a really important step to this end is going to be for us as a board to engage our department heads in um, in deeper ways. We get some really great report outs from them. And, and so this isn't in any way saying that I think they should do something better. I think they're amazing people and performing really beautifully. But I think that we should engage them to find out what are the, what, what are their roadblocks? Where do they hit walls of, I'm spinning my wheels, I can't get traction. Um, deliverables have to be accomplished with multiple steps that could be um, more succinct so that not just they as department heads, but all of the people working beneath their um, guidance are also able to express, hey, could we, you know, could we streamline? Could we do something a different way so that we can increase communication and also um, not just job performance, that would be the, that would be, that'll be when we know we've done our job. But I want to see job satisfaction increased and, and so finding ways to engage them um, so that they can express those things. So, you know, when our Director of Health and Human Services hopped on to public comment there, you know, she's, I, I hear her like, there's a lot more than what she was able to say right there. And so we need to hear those pieces from everybody.
Right.
Throughout the department head survey there, you know, top five needs, top 10 needs, something basic, even top three needs, you know? Um, I've often wondered that, you know, what, what would they each respond to? Not at a report out, but when they have their own private time to write. And maybe they're done anonymous, uh, anonymously. And it's just done as a department head and it doesn't have to outline which department it is, but um, making sure that staff members feel that they have a um, a venue to fully express their opinion and not feel like, you know, it could bite them back or um, get them in trouble or whatever.
Yep.
So Jill, is this the way you see that on the ground? With these department heads meeting separately with them, having them come in here because reporting out is, is always tough. So um, I think we relied on the CAO in the past to um, give us the information on department heads. So if we're going to take it over the boards, which I'm fine with, how do you see it on the ground here?
Um, I'm not sure how to answer that. I almost feel like they should answer that. What do they feel like is the best means by which to achieve this goal? Because I think, I think they know the answer.
Good enough.
How do they want to communicate and how do they feel, you know, not only safe as to communicate everything they want to say? Because I think we need to hear all of that, the, the good, the bad, the difficult. And but um, I lost my train of thought a little bit just from the standpoint that.
And, and they may have real ideas too about how.
Absolutely.
Streamlined and systems improved and et cetera.
Oh, I know what I was going to say. I wanted, I want them to also communicate, how best can we support them? Because I think oftentimes, you know, what could I do that would be tangibly meaningful? That what does support look like to them? Um, tell me what to do to help, help you.
So uh, not unusual for me. I'm going to be a little bit of the fly in the ointment on this one. This is, i- if we're talking about what we do, why we don't have a CAO, okay. But if, if this is our plan and how we move forward, then why do we have a CAO? Um, because this is exactly his job.
Yeah, the only, um, the only way I would slightly disagree with you there is if there's, if there's policy issues that the board needs to address, you know, that, that are a roadblock to a department head like this is required by an ordinance and it doesn't do what it's, it, all it's doing is creating a roadblock in my department. That would be an issue that the board would need to address.
But.
And if they can identify those, it'd be great. Other than that, I, I agree with you.
Yes, I mean, we have a chain of command and the chain of command is from the department head to the CAO and then the CAO is there to decide if, if that's something that they want to bring forward or not, or for them to work together. Uh, I really have a, a different view of the role of the board. Uh, that if we have a CAO that's not functioning, doing those things, then we fire that CAO and bring a new CAO in. But for us to, to make it our policy um, to really undermine the CAO's authority on a, on a general basis is, is I think a recipe for disaster. And I'd love to hear Richard's opinions on that. And, and I could, could be misunderstanding what uh, what Jill's talking about. I, I get that we, well, I'll just stop there.
So if I understand Joe correctly, while we don't have a CAO, we should try to, and I'm, I'm not being on micromanaging the, the department heads. Um, but I do think you're right that it sometimes with a CAO, when we get one, however long that may be, you know, there could be something lost in translation between a department head to CEO and the board. So I do think we should have an avenue, an outlet for them to come to us um, directly if needed, if they're not getting their, their needs met. Anytime.
Keith, you asked me to jump in?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I don't know how to put this. What, here's what, here's uh, the role I would really hope the, the board would take a serious look regarding um, department heads. And I'm not saying that this particular board has been guilty of it, but um, we have experienced it with previous boards that your subject experts are not, are not given the credit for being subject experts. It seems to be the last person the board member talked to is a new subject expert and the and the engagement to the department head is questioning their knowledge rather than first thing you say when you speak to a public member is, my staff is right. My staff knows what they're doing. Rather than, oh, this again. Um, there, there has been a, the culture of the support staff is based on the criticism of, of the last person you spoke with. So what I would love to see a culture is, I believe my department head is absolutely correct. Until I know they did something wrong as opposed to, I'm going to go question my department head as to why. Because I'm pretty sure every board member who was, has reached out to department head and asked that question has left with, oh, they're absolutely correct and I agree with that. So that, that culture of changing that believe first, question second, would really be extremely helpful for, for a morale of the department heads.
But you, you kind of jumped around the question a little bit. I mean, as a CAO, and you can speak here because you're leaving, for a new CAO for the, the board, and again, if we're talking about when we don't have a CAO, that's a different uh, question. Uh, but as, how would you feel as a CAO when individual board members are going to your department heads and, and getting their view and then you come to the meeting um, with that, I, I guess focus on, on that sort of thought more than what you did.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's really the, the dynamic and the relationship you have with your department heads. Because I put a lot of emphasis on the department heads are the subject experts. I'm not a subject expert in anything anymore. I am here to assist them and, and, and clear the path for them. So when a board member has a question, I encourage that they talk to the department head. Um, the only thing I ask the department heads is you, you keep me in the loop. So when we end up in a board meeting and one of the board members says, I was speaking with uh, department at so-and-so, I'm not um, see a Coons, are you okay with it? I already know the information. I already know, we've already spoke. So um, I, I do think that the, the, the board should rely heavy on their department heads, um, because they are the subject experts. Um, so that, just that, that working together is, is a unified team is so important, but especially in such a small community where, where our department heads, they're doing everything from administrative stuff to sometimes clerical. Um, and they're, and they're all doing it with such ethics and hard work and, and commitment that, no, I, I don't, some, some CEOs don't. I worked under a CAO that I was not allowed to talk to as a board member without approval. I don't agree with that. I think um, our CEO or, or board members are, they have to approve our decisions and they should be fully knowledgeable of everything that's going on. So I encourage that. I just want to be kept in the loop. So, so I can either add my assistance or um, I'm not blindsided. Or I can then inform the department head, kind of the will of the board and what direction the board is thinking. So when they make a decision, it, it can, it can uh, help to steer the decision that they're going to make because when, we don't, each department doesn't live in its own little bubble. Each department works with other departments and, and how they affect. That's why we have a department at meetings. So we can all kind of get together and, and collaborate. But as far as without the CAO, um, I really do think um, the support of, of the board is going to be vital because people tend to run rogue sometimes. And I really do think that having that cohesive message from the, from the board that we support our department heads first and question second, would, would just go a long way from morale. Because I thought that's kind of where we're going with this. How do we, how do we support and increase morale?
Yeah. It's an interesting discussion because it's kind of morphed into a little bit what we were talking about before, and that is there is a piece of this that is, is the culture piece. And you know, the clarity, first of all, just that baseline clarity of roles and responsibilities and accountabilities, but more than that, agreements on how the partners work together and, and what characterizes that relationship. Uh, and what you, what you agree is the way decisions get made and the way, you know, the staff and the, and the board interact and all of that really is involved in some clarity about performance expectations and, and operating values and just practice, and then turned into practice, reality of practice. So I think that's one issue. And I think, you know, I, I kind of language that there as an important issue. And then there's the issue of, there is this period of time where you're going to be doing a search. And we don't know how long that's going to last. And so first of all, let's put the search up there because it's, it's a priority. Uh, but second, what is the interim structure and, and mode of operating when you don't have the, the CAO position? And is that thought through and how that's going to work? And what's the role of the department head and the, and the board in that, in that regard?
So, so I think that, you know, I'm the one that's lived through this world of no CAO and it is so nice to have a CAO. Uh, one of, one of the, the things that we have to work through as a board is that department heads soon learn that, that they, they find a board member that listens or if they don't get the answer, it's kind of the kid thing. They don't get the answer they want. They go to the next board member. And so for us to stay as a cohesive voice and that is something that we're going to have to really work on. And again, split up, you know, s- some of the department heads are don't need over, you know, are going to do great. And others, you know, it will depend on how long we're down and uh, how powerful our new uh, intern i- is interim. Yes, thank you.
Um, all right, I've talked this.
I, I do have one more uh, thing that I would like to add there. Um, besides just the department heads, I would like to see the county look into and, and even post in some of these job searches, jobs that can be done remotely or r- remotely three days a week and then you come into the office a couple of days a week. So we can, so we can get some of the people from the outlying areas of the county that may be qualified, but can't afford to drive to Weaverville at $6 and something cents a gallon. And have that available. Um, I, I know there are people that are, that are qualified to do some of these jobs and just can't do it.
Okay.
So I'd like to touch on a couple of things that Jill and Keith said. Um, you know, in a perfect world, I think that um, Richard is right, it should go board um, CAO down, down to the department heads. But you know, not everybody sees eye to eye. If you're a CAO, you don't see eye to eye. You don't have a perfect relationship with all the department heads. So I do think that we need to have an outlet for those people to come to the board. Um, it's not a perfect world. So there will be some people who um, maybe unbeknownst to them, the CAO doesn't understand the, just that this problem needs to be expedited and it's not being expedited. I don't have a problem with someone coming to Jill or Jeremy and then Jeremy voicing that opinion to the rest of the board. Um, I don't think, I wouldn't think that Jill or Jeremy in this situation would be micromanaging. Um, it would just be something that maybe needs to come to the board a little quicker than they got to, or our new CAO just didn't understand exactly um, how quick this may need to happen. So I would think, you know, obviously without a CAO, that uh, we're going to probably be doing a little bit more micromanaging than we've done before, a lot more. But when we do get a, a CAO, I still think that we need a outlet to, the board should be the outlet for any department head that uh, something's getting lost in translation between the CAO them and then back to the CAO to the board. That uh, they could come directly to the board and
right.
And then have a, have a, have a talk about it between the five of us.
Yeah, this is an issue that obviously, as you well aware, and he needs, you need to proceed very thoughtfully about. And I think a lot of it will uh, the, the big unknown here is the next CAO's uh, a style and culture and opinions about this. And I think. And I think a really, uh, you know, an honest conversation, open conversation about these issues with that person would be very advisable because this, that kind of an approach can, can be great. It can also equally backfire. And so I think this is a, this is a great conversation. Uh, and I think it starts with getting some basic agreement on some clarity of how the partnership should work uh, and what the culture is. Uh, and then set very clear expectations about the interaction um, and, and the train of authority and the train of decision making. So I think you're, you're, you're dancing around all of the right questions. But I think the piece missing is what the style and the, and the, and the viewpoint of your new C E, C O is going to be. So anyway.
If I could just clean up really quick, I feel like it was my comments that kind of launched all of this.
Thanks, Jill.
So if I could just clean up two things. First of all, we are talking the 22 to 23 deliverable section. So we really are talking about the part where we are, um, have a very short interim at this point and we don't know how long that's going to last.
Right.
And I'm only looking for, how do we support those department heads? Not how do we, um, you know, play tunes against the metal? And then also to reach out to them to find out, are there any policy changes that would help them not to get in the mud? Tell them how to do their job, anything like that.
Good.
So, yeah.
All right. Thank you, Jill. All right, um, we've got six minutes.
Yeah, I'm thinking, um, if you want to be involved in the last bit of public comment, we should open that up and then come back to fiscal capacity. It'll, and planning at a later date, is that?
Yeah, that's a totally, absolutely, uh, fine with me. We can easily pick up these two things next time.
We'll go ahead and open the public comment on these, these latest sections we've went through and if we have any, let them in.
Alrighty. I'm not seeing any movement yet. Is there anybody with comment now is the time?
All right, don't, don't see any. So I guess instead of trying to jump into these last two items in five minutes, um, we'll go ahead and end here and try to, and try to pick this up in the, in the future, however you can
Absolutely.
Facilitate that, Jim.
Yeah, we do have a, we do have a second session, a final second session set. And so I will do, uh, I will organize this and streamline it so that we can move through not only the final two issues, but we can also sort of get a sense of priority among the deliverables and also across the plan. I think that's going to be important as well. So I'll find a way that we can do that efficiently in the next section, last session. And the final item that we do want to talk about, it's been a few minutes on is plan execution. And the process by which you're going to keep this plan updated and fresh and responsive and how you're going to report and sort of evaluate progress. So that's an important piece that a lot of groups sort of drop the ball on. And so I'd love to make sure we spend a few minutes on that system, um, at the end of the next session. But I think this is all doable, Dan.
Okay, and we'll make sure that we have a whole day available for, for, for the next go around. So, um, okay, with that, I guess we can move on to item 1.2 on our agenda today. Human resources approve waiving the requirement to obtain a relevant land use and environmental planning certificate and waive the requirement to possess five years progressive planning experience for employee ID number 2338 and appoint as interim deputy director of planning. Approximate cost and salary and benefits per month for deputy director of planning at A step is 11,356 and at C step is 12,407. And would it be Shelley that's presenting this or Richard?
I can go ahead and, and take this.
Okay.
If it ends up actually coming even though through personnel, because there's a waiving of the, of the requirements. It's still a recommendation by the CEO's office. What we're trying to do here is give that needed assistance to our planning department. We're still having a very difficult time finding a planning director that has all the qualifications and administrative qualifications. So with what we're trying to do with this position is, is a, ask the board to waive the requirements of the planning portion of the deputy director. So what we can do is we can move a very qualified administrator into that position who can then help the planning department now and into the future when we, when we do recruit and obtain a director to oversee the, the, the functions of the department as it moves really away from in-house planners to consultants. And right now we have three consultants on board and attempting to get a couple more consultants on board to assist with the, of the planning side of it. And that's becoming cumbersome to try and manage a program and manage all these contracts and consultants. So if we can waive the, the requirements for a planner and really focus heavily on the administrative side. When we do get a, a director who has a planner experience, that person can spend their time working with the planning commission, working with the board, working with the developers and not spend as much time doing the administrative fiscal overseeing contracts, overseeing the consultants to make sure that they're meeting their objectives. Uh, I think, I think it would, I think it'd be beneficial to the new director. Some of the complaints from the previous directors is their time is so split between administrative work and actually doing, being the subject expert that it just became overwhelming. So, um, this is not just a Band-Aid. I hope that this is something that will move into the future and help sustain that, uh, planning director when we get one.
All right. Um, do we have any, anybody have any technical questions for Richard for open public comment? Seeing none, we'll open public comment on item 1.2.
Alrighty. John Brower, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm supportive of moving this forward and waiving those requirements. Seems like it's an, an apt time for a battlefield promotion. You know, this is a dire situation. So if you've been able to find somewhat that's already proven themselves within the county that's willing to take this on. I think it's, uh, it makes a lot of sense to do this right now. And, um, I'm supportive of, of this position and the waiving of the requirements. Thank you.
Have any other public comment?
I have no other raised hands and no new chats.
All right, with that, we'll close public, bring it back to the board.
I would move to adopt the item as presented.
I would second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further comments, questions, concerns or motions?
I just want to give some, I do, I want to give some kudos to Dr. Coons. I think this is an example of the creativity that we've recognized we're going to need. And, and I'd, I'd call it an experiment, not, not that I would want to be indicating in a way that the person that gets put in here like have a failed experience at all. But it's a model that we can look at to see if this, how well it works and maybe embrace that if it's needed for something in the future. But I think it's an example of thinking outside the box and I, I applaud it.
Thank you very much. And I have nothing but confidence in someone that we will be promoting. He's been a long time Trinity resident, a long time Trinity staff and has a proven track record of just doing what he's done. So thank you very much.
Any other comment?
With that, motion by Cox, second by supervisor Gogan, supervisor Gogan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox. Supervisor Grove.
Aye.
Supervisor Brown.
Aye.
Chairman Frazier.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. I guess with that, we are adjourned 11:31.
Thank you.